I call to order the January 23 Committee of the Whole Meeting of Simpsonville City Council. City Clerk, City Clerk, Clark, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember O'Leary?
Here.
Councilmember Rube?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pinkerton?
Here.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Here.
Mayor Schumaker?
Here.
Please rise as you are able and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, our United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Phillips with Green Finney Colley is not available tonight. He has had a family emergency come up, so he's not going to be able to make our audit presentation. And that item will be moved to the business agenda on February 15. Each member of council has received a copy of the minutes of our October 24 Committee of the Whole Meeting. That's our last Committee of the Whole Meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved as written. We had no one sign up for citizen comments, so we'll move on to our staff reports. And likewise, our Arts Center Manager, Melissa Sturgis, she has had an issue come up for her, so she will be unable to be with us tonight. Each member has received a copy of that report, so we will skip that one. And we'll go on to our Community Relations Specialist Report. Mr. Campbell, our Community Relations Specialist.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The community relations priorities for quarter, first quarter of 2024 are in line reports that you have received. So I'll just highlight a few of those. First of which is a litter prevention initiative. Now, we do biannual cleanups, but I think more is needed to tackle the litter problem in Simpsonville. And that's going to include cleanups and prevention. One part of this initiative is going to be an Adopt a Street program. It's just like Adopt a Highway or Adopt a Road. Individual organization applies to adopt a city road or street, has to clean it, do cleanups four times a year. And after the first cleanup, they will get that sign, like an Adopt a Highway sign you see while driving. These signs can be made in-house by Public Works, and they will comply with sign ordinance. And we already have somebody on deck, an organization called Golden Strip Sunrise Grocery Club. It's about 15 to 20 active members who are ready to be the first applicants. We are going to continue at least two cleanup days a year. Prevention is harder, believe it or not. Picking up trash is a lot easier than getting people to change their behavior. So part of that's going to be organized, targeted social media campaigns, and then working with Keep Greenville County Beautiful, which is the litter prevention arm of Greenville County, and the statewide organization Tommato Pride, working with them for ideas on prevention and education. Another initiative that I'm really excited about is strengthening the city's relationship with Hillcrest High School. Hillcrest High teacher called us, called the city about putting banners at some point downtown Simpsonville. And after talking to her for a few minutes, I realized her bigger goal is to improve the brand of Hillcrest High in the community. So she and some students have been tasked with working in and with the community to improve Hillcrest High's image. So we talked today, and there are 11 possible events or programs that the city does that Hillcrest High students can potentially take part in. So this is going to involve planning, talking with the different departments who run these different events. Some of the events are ones that I oversee and manage, so we'll have more details as the months go on. And I think it's a great opportunity to create and build a connection with a fixture in the community, which is our only high school in Simpsonville. For community engagement, I'll refresh your memory. We have a tool called ZenCity, and it looks across online at anywhere Simpsonville is mentioned. That is a public forum. And it tells us what our online sentiment score is, basically how happy people are or how mad people are. And out of the last 30 days, there are more than 5,400 interactions with 20, 2-0. 20 of those 5,400 being negative. And that was mainly about the champagne run announcement by the PD that this run was going to happen on January 1st. And some people were understandably not thrilled about the change in traffic patterns. 45% of those interactions, of those 5,400 interactions, were positive and 54% were neutral. And public safety, so Simpsonville Police Department, Simpsonville Fire Department, those are the pages that are really driving that positive sentiment. And last, I'm kind of a nerd, and this is kind of cheesy, but I thought it would be helpful truly for me as a community relations specialist to continue improving in the position, to have a word of the year. So the word of the year for 2024 is forge. This inspires images of creation and building. I want to forge new relationships and connections, create new programs and initiatives, and build up the community and the city of Simpsonville with the purpose of improving the quality of life in Simpsonville city limits. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If I don't have the answer, I'll jot it down, the question, and get back with you hopefully by tomorrow.
Thank you. Specialist Campbell, questions, comments? Councilmember O'Leary?
Just a quick question about the relationship with Hillcrest. I think it's a great idea. I don't care who came up with it, it's a great idea. Any way to expand that to the secondary schools? We have a new facility coming online here in October, I believe. And I think that'd be a great opportunity to get to the middle and all feeder schools to Hillcrest and give them an opportunity, maybe once you see the facilities on field trips, anything like that. Instead of just concentrating on Hillcrest, catch people a little bit earlier in your net.
Hey, good question, Councilman. I think that's a great idea, that this Hillcrest High could be sort of the pilot of a larger program to, or a larger initiative to work with schools across city limits and across the greater Simpsonville area. So I think having that in mind as we work with Hillcrest, that could be kind of a blueprint and then start expanding from there would be a really good goal to have. So I appreciate that question.
Thank you. Councilman Hutchings?
My question also involves the relationship with Hillcrest. Certainly, this would be a perfect opportunity to involve the Youth Advisory Board. Have you thought about that?
Yes, sir. So I've been considering, like, government classes, AT government classes. And even, I think, one of our members goes to Hillcrest High. Even though it's only one, we could still have the Youth Advisory Board visit the school, visit government classes, US history classes. There is a real need for improving civic engagement, civic education. And I think that Youth Advisory Board could be a really good vehicle for that. So thank you for that question.
Councilman Rocha?
I appreciate your efforts on the litter prevention initiative. Is there a place that the public can access the application for Adopt a Street on the website?
There will be. This is coming off the ground. I wanted to put this in my report and talk to you all tonight. And then next month, have a resolution hopefully come before council to support this program. It's not something I want to be in the background. It's going to be a Simpsonville Simply Proud Litter Prevention Program. I've already got the name. But there will be an application that I'm working on, and it will be really short, really easy for people to want to, who want to contribute to submit an application and we start that process. So there will be ones who...
Thank you.
Any further comments from council? I just wanted to personally thank you for the work you're doing on the podcast. I understand that we may have more than one listener, and so that's kind of a running joke if you've listened to the podcast. We only have one listener, but I'm hoping that everybody will avail themselves of that additional communication from the city. I think it's a very good thing. I think that completes all of our community specialist reporting. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next up is our monthly financial report with Christine Farino, our Finance Director. Director Farino?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few highlights from the December financial report. General fund revenues for December were $818,000. Total revenues collected year-to-date is $3.8 million, and that's 16% of the budget. The expenses for December were just over $2 million, with total expenses year-to-date at $10.4 million. And that's 44% of the budget. The sewer fund revenues for December were $48,000. Year-to-date collections were $1.5 million, and that's 69% of the budget. The December expenses were $270,000, with the total year-to-date expenses at $723,000, which is 59% of the budget. The hospitality and accommodations fund revenues for December were $342,000. Year-to-date is $2.8 million, and that's 78% of the budget. The December expenses were $55,000. Year-to-date is $1.2 million, and that's 39% of the budget. The Public Works Enterprise Fund revenues for December were $67,000. Year-to-date collections was $98,000, and that's 6% of the budget. The December expenses were $77,000, and the year-to-date expenses were $429,000, which is 35% of the budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council? Thank you, Director Farino. Next up is our City Administrative Report. Administrator Graceley?
Thank you, Mayor and Members of Council. For three of you, this is the first time you're seeing this monthly report. What I try to do in this report is keep you up to date on projects that are ongoing and then also provide any information to you. So what you'll see may seem a little repetitive as the year goes on, but that's because we have all of these large projects that continue throughout the year. And so if you'll read through that, it will provide you the latest update on the status of those projects. It's outlined pretty well, so I think rather than go through it, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Council?
Councilmember Rick? Has DOT gotten back with us on that speed limit sign requested sometime back for Jonesville Road?
No, I haven't heard back from Brandon Wilson yet. He normally is pretty responsive, but I think probably with holidays, he was delayed in getting that. But I'll recheck out to him.
Okay. And I noticed, uh, stuff a vision slipped in my mind. The path that we talked about, the walking path that crosses Jonesville.
Redfern.
It looks like that had been addressed recently. I know the city doesn't handle that, but have you been able to get any, any emails from them saying that they had addressed that? It looks like they threw some rocks. And I know this isn't city, but it does, I'm getting a lot of questions about it from...
Yeah, I'm not sure what SEDOT has done with that. That was also part of that request, and I think I copied you on that email. But I've not had any correspondence back from him, so I don't know what they've done or maybe what other parties have done. But, you know, there is a little longer distance than I had originally thought between Redfern and the existing site of Alcom Jonesville. So we've got a little more ground to cover. And there seems to be, you know, a pretty dense tree line, too, that's going to be an issue. So it may be a little more cumbersome for our staff to take on that project than I had originally thought. That is a good reminder, and that's not in my report. The head street sidewalk project will be getting underway very soon, which will complete the sidewalk along Hedge up to Fernwood, Fernwood. Yes, I'm sorry, my thing there clearly. But I will continue to pursue that and see. You know, that's a project that's going to take significant funding, so that would have to be a budgeted item that we don't have. And like I said, it may be something that's beyond our capabilities in-house, so we may have to actually put that project out a bit. But I do think it's worth pursuing to have that connectivity from the entrance of Redfern up to the existing side wall.
Yeah, so it's definitely a dangerous area in the way that cars travel. I did see police there today, which I'm happy to see because there's way too much speed in that area. I'm afraid someone's going to get hit crossing that road. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Council? Councilmember Pinkerton?
Yes. In regards to stormwater, where you have mentioned that you're looking for grants or funding for possible buyouts for homes. It doesn't necessarily mention any particular homes. And you would have to go to competitive low-interest loans provide funding for buyouts. But my question is, I guess, if you're going to buy out a property, is that going to provide an engineered solution for the actual problem with the stormwater in that particular location? A house or a property isn't necessarily the cause of a stormwater problem, but...
Right. I think that those would then be, the houses would be demolished, and those would be natural retention areas that would hopefully help store some of the stormwater before it dissipates to surrounding properties, is what we're thinking. So it would, of course, provide immediate relief to those most impacted. But then it could also be a natural stormwater retention system that would help before the water gets, you know, sheet flowing to other properties. It would, it would allow for some retention on the site of the buyout.
So it would be a cost of the buyout of property plus an engineered solution plus whatever grading possibly have to...
Plus demolition of the structure, yes.
Would there be any thought that you could actually look to see about solving the problem first before that cost, before actually buying out the property?
Well, I think buyouts are going to be the most achievable solution. Stormwater is a multi-million dollar, if not, you know, half-billion dollar problem. And so I think, you know, working with the people most directly impacted is going to be the most feasible solution for us in the near term at least, because I don't see us generating revenues and the multi-million dollars to do, you know, stormwater. The issue with stormwater is you can't just address it in one area because there's flow downstream that gets impacted and it puts water on other areas. So it sometimes is not only a single jurisdiction, but it's multiple jurisdictions that are involved. And it's also an Army Corps of Engineers issue, so, you know, it involves other agencies as well. It's not something the city could just say, we're going to fix this problem and start working toward that. I think it's a much more involved project than, you know, most people would realize. It's, it's not an easy problem to solve. It's a very complicated problem. And, you know, the neighborhoods where it's most prevalent are neighborhoods that have been dealing with this problem for decades. It's not a new problem. It's just happened in recent years. It's a problem that's existed for many, many years.
Yeah, I agree with you. And my point was, there are, the actual problem may not be at that particular location, but there's multiple problems downstream. So my concern was, or could be, if, if we are going to buy out a property at the head of the problem, that there's an engineered solution that solves the rest of the problem. Otherwise, to me, it would be feasible to at least look at the other opportunities before we select this one. That's my point, I guess.
Well, and right now, there's no funding available. We haven't secured any funding for the problem. The Office of Resiliency unfortunately is offering low-interest loans. They're not offering grant solutions currently, and those would require payback from the city. And so, you know, it's finding the funding first and then deciding, I guess, you know, for lack of a better term, which part of the elephant you want to try to eat first. It's a huge problem. And so, you know, there are a few people that are most impacted. And I think it's important for council to, if we are able to find some funding, to try to help provide some relief to those people first. Because the scale of the enormity of the project and the scale of the cost is going to make it very difficult to take on a large stormwater project.
Okay. Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you.
Council? Councilmember O'Leary?
Yeah, so I looked at the report. Thanks for doing that. And the CCMB Amphitheater, I did jog my memory. I remember sitting in a meeting here. It's probably been a year ago in Belize. And I had a guy who was obviously, he was very nervous speaking, but, and I haven't seen this contract, obviously, that we've signed. But they made a mention of all ball fields at Heritage Park pretty much being locked out on any weekends. There's a concert, which kind of cripples the ability to have weekend tournaments, things like that. So I didn't know if that was something that we could look at or if that's a done deal, done deal, because it would be nice to have full range of those facilities.
So I know that initially when Heritage Park was conceptualized and built, it was paid for through bonds issued from the local hospitality accommodations tax. Those bonds have since been satisfied. So the original intent of the park was to provide tournament space, but also largely to provide youth recreation that serves our community directly. And the bonds were a way to achieve that. And so, you know, I think youth recreation serving the youth of Simpsonville is top priority, which we're doing, and I think our staff does a very good job of that. Tournament play is wonderful, but the city also, you know, back in 2008, made a decision to build this stage and this amphitheater. And now we're several million dollars into that. And so the revenue generated from a concert, for instance, is in one event more than we would generate in a whole season of tournaments. And I'm not saying one has to trump the other. I'm just saying the contract does mandate that they provide us hold dates, but it also stipulates that if they have a last minute booking, that any tournament would have to give way to that event. And so we tell people that if they call and inquire about having tournaments. Yes, if we don't have a hold date, we'll book your tournament. But there's also the very slight chance that it could get bumped again. And a lot of people don't want to have to, obviously, there's a lot of planning that goes in it. You know, I was a travel ball parent for many, many years, so I know about all of that. And, you know, as a travel ball parent, you don't want to have that expectation that you're going to a place and then have a tournament canceled either. So I don't think that there's anything else we can do right now as far as having them coexist in any way other than they currently coexist. But I do want to say that I believe our Parks and Recreation staff do an amazing job of accommodating youth in this area. There's also one field at Woodside that could accommodate that. I know that's not ideal, you know, tournaments need multiple fields. But that's sort of where we are, is the hand we've been dealt in 2024 that, you know, was started when the amphitheater was conceived many years ago.
Okay. Thank you. Council? Administrator Graceley, for our local recreational league, softball, baseball, the kids who live here, I'm not talking opposite of travel ball, the kids who live here, we're able to accommodate all those needs even with concerts coming and going. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, because they play during the week. And if there is a concert, that, you know, we're usually aware several weeks in advance. And so they just schedule around that. Our schedule for that event to happen at Woodside Park as opposed to Heritage Park. So yes, we are, well, I think there was only one issue in recent memory, and it was an opening day, I think, that was impacted by a concert. And so it just got, the festivities of that got pushed to a different date.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember O'Leary?
What, what's considered a last minute booking for a concert?
When I say last minute, I mean there's generally still at least a four to six week. Yeah, because, you know, they've got to sell tickets for it. So it's not like a concert gets booked on a Monday and it happens on Friday. It's a little more advanced news than that. But still, for tournament organizers, you know, they still don't want to run that risk. But they certainly, you know, if they're willing to assume a, have a 30-day cancellation, then we can still book tournaments on weekends that there are no concerts.
Thank you. Councilman Rocha?
Addressing the issue with the vandalized restrooms over at Heritage Park. Questions I've received are, why were they locked at night? Do we have security cameras in place? Do we know who did it? And how can we prevent it in the future?
We are unfortunately correcting the actions of vandals more often than I would like to tell you we are. It's very frustrating. We are looking at locks that are on a timer to replace the existing locks out there because occasionally it does get missed that the restrooms don't get locked. I mean, we tried and I'll have that happen, but it's happened before. It's happened with the downtown restroom. You know, different departments work together to make sure those doors are locked. But what we are doing right now is looking at a system that would put all that on timers so that they would be locked when there are no events in the park. And of course, we do lock the gates so vehicles can't travel into the park. But, you know, these are likely teenagers. No, they haven't been caught. Unfortunately, they tampered with the cameras. There are cameras that those were tampered with so that, you know, we don't have a good description of the people who are responsible. They did catch the vandals for the downtown restroom. That's the news. That happened a few, I think about three months ago. You all probably remember that. The good news is the restrooms are open again. Staff got in there on Sunday and cleaned it up and had everything replaced yesterday. So they did get in there very quickly to remedy the problem. And we do have an insurance claim for the cost of the damages.
Council? Thank you, Administrator Graceley. For our new council members, it's the practice of our department heads to attend our Committee of the Whole Meeting, who don't usually make a full report directly to council. We always have a report from our Finance Director and from our City Administrator, and rotating reports from the Community Relations Specialist, Arts Center. Am I missing any, Administrator Graceley? Those are the only regular reports. Oh, planning. We will have a planning report on a rotating basis as well. But the other department heads always attend. And so this is the time when I ask if you have any questions or comments for Chief of Police, our Fire Chief. Chad Foster's here for Parks and Rec. It's standing in for Robbie Davis. And Andy West is here from Public Works. So any questions or comments for them? Councilmember Rube?
Chief Anshel, you have a quick second. Could you give us an update, and maybe you don't know, a catch-up card, on how the warnings for tickets are going from the ordinance that we passed a few months ago about cut through traffic?
I'd have to look the data up to give you an exact number, but they should be practicing the same thing. We usually give them a fresh period of time where we're writing the warnings. But I don't have that data in front. I mean, I could look it up for you, provide it to you if that's something you'd like to have.
Yeah, I'd like to see, and maybe when that's going to go more to effect, like how long we're giving the public. So...
We usually give them traditionally about 30 days of warning and, you know, a chance to adjust to any new traffic plans or any new traffic issues.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. See, also, Administrator Graceley, business owners have called in and seen a difference or any kind of feedback at all on that.
I've not heard anything. You know, one of the main reasons for that was we get cut through traffic through here. And most of us who work here have almost been clipped by a car just parking and coming into the building because they fly through, you know, trying to avoid these intersections. And so I can tell you, I've not, I've not experienced that lately. I don't know about other staff, but I do know we passed that a few months ago. So if there happen tickets, those should be part of your public safety report if tickets have been issued. But I know that, you know, there's another shopping center down, you know, between West Georgia, Maple Street, back up to May, where, you know, that was happening quite a bit as well. And I haven't heard from those business owners to know if they've been, if they've seen a decrease or if they've had fewer of those cut through. To me, that's not a great cut through, you know, there's a lot of twists and turns to get through there. But I know I'm not known as good as much out here as we have in the past.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Chief, one more moment. Any other comments or questions for Chief Anshel? All right, then, two things. If you are going to look up data on the cut through issue, would you look and see if we have written any tickets for squat trucks? Having nearly been run over in crosswalks in downtown Simpsonville multiple times, not particularly by squat trucks, but they're particularly... particularly by squat trucks, but they're particularly dangerous for pedestrians, and I'm still seeing squat trucks in town, so I'd like to know that we're doing some enforcement there.
I'll be glad to check on it, I know we've got one officer that has been working on some public safety information for that, and he is aggressively looking to put us, you know, write some tickets for that kind of violation.
Okay, great.
Put that on his list.
On the positive side, in looking at your report, I see that you're sustaining or even increasing the amount of regular traffic enforcement over months and months, and I really appreciate seeing that, and you, you already know how important I feel that is just as mayor, but I would really like to see that for our city, that's really good for having, I think it's important for encouraging people to be better behaved on our roads, which is important for public safety.
Yes, sir.
It's our consistent message.
Yes, thank you. So, Councilman Rorrie, may I have a question for you, Chief?
Yeah, we kind of discussed this before the meeting, and nice to meet you.
You too.
I'm the new guy, one of them. I'm on these residence pages and everything else, where, see, and this actually happened to my next door neighbor, we obviously have people riding around in the middle of the night, going around jiggling people's door handles and stealing things out of their cars, I didn't know if that was on your radar at this point, or?
It is, we traditionally encourage the officers when they're not asked for the other calls, especially the night shifts, to be in the neighborhood looking for this type of activity, we've had some success in the past in catching some folks that were doing that, it's not always that fortunate, but we do put in the effort, and that is part of the routine objectives and patrols.
Thanks. Thank you, Chief. All right, Councilmember Hedges.
Got a question for Public Works, and I have a constituent that's asking me about the markings on the North Main Street where the two lanes converge into one, the arrows there faded out, and they've noticed some accidents, potential accidents because of that, is that something we can do as a city to repaint those arrows?
No, we can do it.
Are you talking about Northeast City, shouldn't you?
Yeah.
That's S C D O T.
I thought it was, but is there anything we can do to encourage them to?
We can encourage them to do that, given the fact that our downtown project is in there, just like we haven't really addressed the condition of the crosswalks like we have been in the past, because we know we're going to be tearing all of that up and starting over, they may not be as inclined to come out, but if there are accidents, or if they see that it's a serious health or safety risk, then maybe we can get them to do that. So I need to follow up on Councilman Root's question, and I'll make a note to ask them about that as well.
Counsel, any questions for any of our other department heads, comments, questions? Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our business items. First up is item 8A, funding for GreenLink in fiscal year 25 budget, and Administrator Graceley, would you like to introduce Executive Director Keel and our chairperson, Walker Smith, with us as well?
Yes, thank you both for coming, if you want to make your way to the front, I'm just going to give counsel a brief introduction. So the mayor and I met with Mr. Keel and Ms. Smith last year. For many years now, there's been a route that serves the Golden Strip area and Walden and Simpsonville specifically, at no expense to either of the cities, and it's been subsidized by the city of Greenville for quite some time, there is a lot of federal funding that comes into transit, but it, you know, there needs to be a change now for us to continue to have this connector route running to this part of the county, and so essentially what they are asking for is $47,000 a year and a commitment to GreenLink, to GTA for continuation of that route. And I will tell you that the city of Walden has approved that funding request, it'll be part of their FY25 budget, but their funding is contingent on whether or not this council decides to provide the funding as well. So with that, this is Keel, he's the executive director of GreenLink, and he's going to give you more information as far as ridership, the route schedules, and all of those questions that I know you will have.
Director Keel, before you start, I will give you a little bit of a heads up, those microphones can be a little bit choosy about listening to people, especially people who are tall, so if you hear yourself dropping out, that just means you need to get closer. Thank you.
Great, I'm normally out in one, so if I'm talking too loudly, let me go. Thank you, appreciate the invitation, mayor and members of council, it's always nice to come in and share what's going on, kind of regionally as it relates to transit, so prepare a number of slides, verse 22, I'm not planning on going into great detail, we could be here all day, I'm very passionate about transit, but my mom lives in Simpsonville and she has dinner waiting for me, so I'm going to enjoy that before I go back home. So we'll jump into what we do, there's three main services that we provide throughout Greenville County, fixed route, which is what you preliminarily see down here, it's normal quote-unquote transit bus, there's paratransit service, this is a service that you don't often see because it doesn't run on a regular route, but if somebody has some sort of physical disability and they live on a route, we will actually pretty much come to their front door and take them anywhere else in our service area if there is a reason that we need to do it, and one of those reasons might be that there's no sidewalks in the area that are accessible, or they're going somewhere that doesn't have great accessibility, and the unfortunate part about South Carolina as a whole really is that sidewalks are something that were kind of forgotten in a lot of areas, so we provide more of these trips than we would care to, but nonetheless, we're still legally required to do it as far as the federal government's concerned. And then we have poly service, you only really see this downtown Greenville, it is fully funded by the city of Greenville, there's no federal funds to go into a bit of the services that we operate. So 12 routes we operate, we've got about 185,000 people that we service as it relates to our network, about 125,000 jobs. For FY23, almost 700,000 rides, interestingly enough, the number is going up at an alarming rate, so our annual meeting for GTA is actually on Friday, we were one of a handful, less than 10 communities that provide transit that have actually had the fastest regrowth of transit ridership in the country. So people are riding the bus, which is, is important, is indicative of why it's important, but you can certainly see our network here, we're going to get into a little bit more detail about urbanized areas and where I'll always service a little bit. Ultimately, though, we start at 5:30 every day, last trip leaves at 10:30, meaning service ends at 11:30. Saturday's an 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. day, we are actively working on trying to have Saturday near the weekday, finding seat yield drivers has been very difficult, a four-year problem that we are continuing to work on. Right now, no Sunday service, we're working on that as well, we need some more funding, that's a different project for a different day, but the majority of our routes only come once an hour, we've got one route that's the Woodruff Connector that does offer 30-minute service for the majority of the year. As it relates to the fare structure, it's up here, not going to go into a lot of detail, you can pay with cash, you can pay with coins, you can download the UMO Transit app, multiple ways to pay, you can come to Ticketbooth and buy tickets, you can get a smart card, you can get a monthly pass, if you can fathom a way to pay for the bus, there's probably a chance that we're going to take it. What's coming later this year, though, is the ability, hopefully you don't have to pay hard and tap to pay, or use your smartphone or your Apple Watch or your Android Pay to actually be able to hop on the bus and pay that way as well. All of our data is pushout, you can get on Google, if you get the little transit icon down here, you can actually plan your transit route anywhere on the network, it'll tell you which bus stop to walk to, when the bus is going to come, how to get there, if you wanted to open the Transit app, it gives you same information, but in a much more rich way, Transit app works with most major cities around the country, whenever you're there, you get a lot of rich transit data, and you can also use UMO, which is the mobile ticketing system as well. Paratransit, 15,000 rides at FY23, that number has increased by about 17% as we move in, as we move from year to year, it is a 24-hour notice, meaning you need to call today if you want to ride tomorrow, and it's through the community, which is twice our base fare, you get an idea of the service area there, so if you imagine that the route, we will go three quarters of miles in either direction, so it's a mile and a half buffer on each road that we provide paratransit service to, as long as it's not one of our routes. Ridership's been going up, fortunately for us, it's great, a lot of transit agencies around the country have not seen this, COVID destroyed many transit agencies, and they have been struggling to recover. In our worst month, we had a roughly 50% decrease in ridership, most agencies were at an 80% decrease in ridership. We recovered to our pre-pandemic levels in 2021, most agencies still have not recovered their original ridership, so we're doing something right, always looking to do better, but transit is definitely healthy and well in Greenville. So if you look at specifically Route 601, and that's the route that serves the city of Simpsonville and runs to the city of Walden, once again, ridership is going up year over year, which is great. This is where it starts to get tricky, I don't know how often you all dive down the urbanized area rabbit hole, so here's the high level of what the mapmakers of the US government have determined where is an urban area as it relates to Greenville County, Pickens County, and how it ultimately affects us. So the purple area is the Greenville urbanized area, it has changed from the 2010 census as it actually, at one point, the last census included the city of Clemson, so our federal funding, we were splitting with Clemson, but the orange area is the Walden-Simpsonville urbanized area, which includes the city of Walden, the city of Simpsonville, and now most of the city of Fountainhead, which, as we overlay the municipal boundaries for all of the municipalities in Greenville County, you can start to understand how that's happening. Why that's important for us is that between the Greenville urbanized area and the Walden-Simpsonville urbanized area, the federal government puts money into both pots, so they put money into Greenville, they put money into Walden-Simpsonville, and operationally, we can't raid the pots, so we can't take money that is in Walden and Simpsonville and use it to pay for some sort of transit in the Greenville urbanized area. For many years, there has been more federal money in the Walden-Simpsonville urbanized area than we've labeled it, or all down spent, and ultimately, it's because, while the population dictates it's on a large urban area, it hasn't made sense to have a lot of transit down there. As Greenville continues to grow, that ultimately will change. Well, where it really starts to get tricky is whenever you try to figure out, well, what happens as, as time changes? So I'm going to skip down here a little bit, and then we'll, we'll go back, so if you look at, where am I at? Man, oh man, I messed up, whose words is this?
Hang on a second, I'll get you home.
Ah, yeah.
I don't know which slide you want to start with.
I just started from the top, and I'll scroll back through them.
I think you were along about here.
Yeah, sure.
I'm not used to driving this thing either, but.
It's okay, I should be a bit of a technology than I am. So where this really started getting interesting is how ultimately all that's been impacted by the state mass transit fund, which for the purpose of this, we're just going to call the S N T F. So whenever we started this, this route back in 2012, actually, the city of, there's enough state mass transit funding to match the federal, so if we go back to the federal conversation that we're having with urbanized areas, operationally, and I don't want to get too much in the weeds here because it gets confusing, operationally, meaning that paying for the driver, paying for fuel, paying for the overhead, the federal government will give us 50% of that funding, whatever comes to taking care of the bus, they'll give us 80% of it. Well, whenever we were originally looking at the Walden-Simpsonville area, the reason that you had a significant amount of money down there was because ultimately, there was enough state mass transit funding to match the needs of transit in this area. So whenever, you know, it started back in 2012, there was sufficient funding, originally it was Route 14, it was a 120-minute route, so it would leave downtown Greenville, go through Walden, return to Simpsonville, turn around and go back. And then in 2019, we decided to change things, and really, the reason that we decided to change things was because if you took a map of Greenville County and where all the mills were in Greenville County and overlaid it with where our transit delivery was, not a lot had changed, and what we realized was that if we wanted to be able to grow as an agency and see the ridership go up the way you do, we need to make some changes. And one of those changes was basically taking Route 14, and we had an entire renumbering, but ultimately Route 14 became Route 510, which is between Greenville and Walden, and Route 601 between Walden and Simpsonville, and a 500 route is one that leads the downtown transit center, and a 600 route is any route that does not come into downtown, that's just a little bit of nomenclature on how we ultimately number our routes. But originally, there was enough state mass transit funding to fund this route, and it did for a number of years. I've been with Greenville Transit for, now, for about eight years, and I remember whenever I first started back in 2015, and we were getting into the next year's budget, we had enough state mass transit funding to pay for everything, and that was great, but unfortunately, inflation has, has become a bit of a beast, and the problem started to present itself as we started looking at, well, if we wanted to add more transit in this area, what would happen? Because there are three municipalities that are ultimately impacted by the money from the Walden-Simpsonville urbanized area, Walden, Simpsonville, and Fountainhead, so if one, I'm not going to call anybody out, but if one of the other municipalities came forward and said, hey, we wanted to add transit, can we get part of the S N T F to help fund that? We realized, we got a problem, because now what happens if RIR comes to the table, what happens if travel sheriffs comes to the table and says, hey, we want transit, how do we have to split all that money up? And it became a real challenge for us, so as we started figuring out what to do with S N T F, you'll notice these numbers trend down, which is never something that you want to see whenever it comes to revenue. So state mass transit funding dates back to the late 80s, early 90s, and it is one quarter of one penny of the fuel tax, so 0.0025 cents for every gallon of gas that you pay for in the state goes to transit. Now, I haven't figured out S C D O T math, but it's been $6 million since its inception, so if you look back, whenever this started, there were about 12 agencies, there's now over 27 that are getting this, this $6 million, so we're still all getting some pie, it's just a whole lot less than it used to be, and that's ultimately what you see year over year. Now, as these numbers have decreased, our expenses unfortunately have not followed the same trend, so we had to figure out a way to deal with that, so ultimately, staff, I've got some great people that work for me, they're not here today, I say that because I have a literally nationally award-winning staff for the work they do, and we're very blessed to have them that want to live in this community. But we came up with this plan, and ultimately, what it was, we needed to figure out a way to divide the money up equally and equitably and figure out what to do, so I'm not going to read through this, but ultimately, what we decided to do was, well, let's look at how many miles of service, of revenue service we're providing in each municipality, and use that as a, basically a percentage to figure out who should pay for what. We also put a little bit of a buffer in there, that if less than 10% of it is in a municipality, then we're not going to go to them and then ask them for a little piece of the pie, especially in most of those cases, there's even no stops or one stop. So if we look at this route, it's 14 miles, ultimately, we had to figure out how to split this $80,000 of S N T F that we're trying to deal with, and we ended up using this math, 46% for Simpsonville, 54% for Walden, and it's being driven ultimately just because there's actually more stops and more service in Walden. So there are three routes that ultimately subscribe to the Walden-Simpsonville urbanized area, it's by Jen Lawrence, again, that's the route between Greenville and Walden, Route 601, that's the Simpsonville connector, and then Route 602, that's the Woodruff Connector, but with that route, there's actually none of that state money actually going to it, so right now, half the state money is going to the Lawrence route, and a portion of the money is going to the Walden-Simpsonville route. Now, as the city administrator alluded to, as those costs have gone up, the city of Greenville has been graciously subsidizing that. So the total cost right now for FY24, operating 601 with paratransit, with route maintenance, is almost $900,000 a year. Operationally, that's a little over $500,000, maintenance is a little close to $4 million, and then paratransit's around $150,000. Fares, you're subsidizing a little over $33,000 of that, which means the federal government right now is picking up a bill of almost $600,000. State mass transit funding's paying a little over $79,000, which is, please, a local balance of. which leaves a local balance of $267,000. Through an arrangement we have, ultimately, the county also provides funding for transit. They provide more cash funding than anybody else in the area, and that's going to be 60%. So if they pay for 60% of the $237,000, that leaves you with $142,000, which then if we apply the 54%, 46% split, you're left with Malden and Simpsonville paying a little over $51,000 for Malden, a little over $43,000 for Simpsonville. We padded the number in the sense of preparing for inflation for FY25 and a little bit of capital replacement. Our buses last for 12 to 15 years. We just don't want to get caught their pants down on that. So ultimately, where we are and why I'm here is the city of Greenville has made a decision to not subsidize Route 601 as we move forward. So the request was made in Malden, this is the request was made in the city of Simpsonville. Malden's being asked to provide 54, Simpsonville 47. And at the end of the day, we needed an answer. I don't have... I want it to continue, be very happy if it does. But if there's not a desire to have transit in Simpsonville, then we need to be able to let people know that they need to find a different way to get around. I think ultimately, why that's important, though, is there are a lot of mixed numbers about transit, some really strong opinions that are out there, especially in the community that we live in. I think what's interesting, though, is if you look back to COVID, and who was actually riding the bus? And what is Greenville County, and who are we as a community? By and large, for most people who live in Greenville County and use the bus, use the bus to get to work, or the hospital, or the grocery store. So the reason our ridership didn't drive down is because Greenville, South Carolina didn't shut down. It's not just Greenville, right? People need transit to be able to get to work. And ultimately, if we don't provide that for them, business is the one that takes the hit. And business is getting louder and louder as we continue to recruit businesses of how we don't get people to work. And really, that's what you see right now. And whether you believe it or not, economic downturn has a major impact on transit. We have a portion of the population who, you know, whenever times are good and wages are good and gas is cheap and insurance is cheap, they can afford to operate their vehicle. But when gas goes up and insurance goes up and times get tough, it drives them back to ultimately transit. We want to be able to provide that for them and make sure they can still get to work and end up on unemployment or, you know, some other service and ultimately end up the impact business. So appreciate your consideration. Happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. A motion is in order. Did you have something to add?
I was just going to offer perhaps the way the motion could be worded. This would be to direct the city administrator to include funding for GreenLink in our FY25 budget.
Thank you. A motion is in order. Councilmember Roche.
See if I can pound this out. I didn't know that. Marty, mayor move that council approve directing funding for the GreenLink system FY2025 in the FY2025 budget.
Second.
A motion from Councilmember Roche with the second from Councilmember Root. Discussion? Councilmember Roche.
I didn't see any solid data as far as Simpsonville residents that are using the GreenLink services. Do you know how many riders daily, monthly, annually, just for Simpsonville?
Just for Simpsonville, no, but yes. I don't have a presentation. Can easily get our transit planner, run some reports, and look at stop levels, maybe then get you a total of what that would look like.
I'd appreciate that. I rarely see anybody waiting on the bus. And I've wondered, as I drive by during the busiest times, and I would think people would be there, whether or not it's even worth coming this way. And so certainly, I don't want to send $47,000 of our budget to something that majority of our citizens are not using. If you can get those numbers, and I don't know that you'd really have a way to know, are they using it for employment or education? Are they using it for health services?
So statistically, we do have a customer service survey that we put out and we asked those questions. So, well, I couldn't answer it specifically for the people that live in Simpsonville. We do have a statistically significant sample size of our ridership that I can tell you in general what that looks like, and I can provide that to you as well. That's the report already.
I'd appreciate that. So engaging the usage, which would be the only reason I could see justifying the expense, I also have to weigh in the drawback to having this. And now I'm gonna say the hard part out loud, and I know people are going to maybe not like it, but the experience that we're having in Simpsonville is that the homeless are being bussed to Simpsonville. I don't know if they'll be sent. I've been told they've been... They're sometimes given bus fare from downtown Greenville. Whatever the case, a couple of places in the city, inside the city limits really look badly since COVID, since this rumored take a trip has started. We've got a stop right there by the Walmart gas station. And they will get off the bus and just immediately start panhandling. We've become the place to panhandle. And they'll stand out there around that Walmart gas station. They'll stand within the parking lot. They have camps, they have networks, they have a whole system. And our police have been called and asked to break some of it out, get them out from behind the private businesses that are along Fairview Road there. They'll come, they'll panhandle, they'll do whatever they're doing, and then they get back on the bus and go somewhere. I don't know where. But that's something that we need to consider about whether or not that's something that we want to throw money toward, because it's actually costing us funds to have the police out there and take care of that issue for our private businesses. So there, I said the hard part out loud, but it had to be said. I mean, it has to provide a service that Simpsonville residents are really gonna use, number one. And two, it can't cause us more expenditure by having their route come here, if that's going to be the result. Another hotspot is the Palmetto Inn. There's a stop right there by McDonald's, by that gas station, the Palmetto Inn. And boy, I've seen some things. I have seen some things since living here. You know, when, in 2012, when, you know, they said, hey, we want bus routes. We want... I think it was, we want to be a part of that. Like, we want to, we want that access, and we want to be a part of that. And then as time has gone on, the service kind of... The demand for it kind of dwindled. Everyone wants to drive their own car. That's very apparent by all the traffic problems that we have. But those that are using it are using it, in my take, my assessment, to come here, gain what they can for the day, get back on the bus and leave. And it's not like a contributing factor to anything good in Simpsonville. And again, I'm sorry, I have to say the hard part out loud. Yeah, I'd like to see some numbers
Sure.
to justify that our residents are actually using that service for good reasons, and they need it, before I would say yes to this.
I will say, I would echo in agreement that we see homelessness problems across the entire county. I don't think it's a problem that is just plaguing Simpsonville. I live in Taylor's, an unincorporated area, and the homelessness problem that we're having up there as well is becoming ever apparent. So your concerns are valid. Again, I'm willing to have you provide some data on the riders that you do know and where they're going, and how they're using the system.
We want it to be used for good things, that's all.
So do we!
You know.
Yeah.
Not, you know, not for what we're seeing right now. Where it's like a day stop to panhandle and then to get back on. And I don't know where they're going, but...
Councilmember Roche?
Yeah, bear with me for a second while I do this out. I'm with Councilmember Roche about being a good steward of money. You know, I have no issues with public transportation. But yeah, there's one thing you said that piqued my interest a little bit. The lifespan of a bus is 12 to 15 years.
Yes, sir.
One of the very first pictures shown was an electric bus.
Yes, sir.
And just today, I read an article from Asheville. They spent $800,000 per electric bus a couple of years ago, and four out of five are out of service now and probably not repairable. So being a good steward of money, once you get into a system like this, you agree to this. If someone's not a good steward of your money and invest in things that are not going to last 12 to 15 years, that 47 turns into 97 very quickly. So I didn't know what kind of fleet we're talking about paying for here and maintaining and future-wise.
So we operate diesel down here. It's a Gilley Bus manufactured in Livermore, California. One of the best brands that is out there. You can run the bus for 18, 20 years if you ultimately choose to. It's a phenomenal vehicle. We do have four Proterra vehicles. We purchased them in 2019. I said a few minutes ago that I have a phenomenal staff. I would probably go on the record and say that our uptime for our Proterra fleet is probably the best in the country. That's not accidental. We know where the parts were housed here in Greenville, and oftentimes, we can go up there and get parts and figure out what's going on in a good way, as the good thing is that at the same time, I'm sure you cut up with the news and then realized that Proterra has declared bankruptcy, and Phoenix Motors purchased the transit division, and Volvo bought the battery, and then some company I can't even think of ended up with the energy management piece. It is definitely a priority for the city of Greenville to operate electric vehicles. I will say that priorities for the city of Greenville and the priorities for the Greenville Transit Authority are not a licensing. She's got it in her head. So because of that, we ultimately share your sentiments that we need vehicles that are going to run well and run for a long time. We fully anticipate getting 12 years out of the Proterra vehicles that we have. We have compressed natural gas buses on order as well, so we try to transition to a cleaner fuel that is just as reliable as diesel. And significantly cheaper than in the electric alternative. So your concerns are valid there, and it's one that I personally share a great interest in as a taxpayer as well.
Thank you. Council? Councilmember Peddick.
Yeah, excuse me if I get the math wrong, but just did it real quick. It looked like for this particular route, fares make up about .03% of your cost. So that's not a lot. So in any of this scenario over in the entire system, is there any thought that you'd actually raise ridership fare to make up for this difference? I mean, if they're all going to work and school and all these great, healthy places, it seems like they'd be able to share in this economy that we're all facing.
I agree. There's been a lot of thought and conversation about if we should raise our fares and how that would impact things. Ultimately, there's this rule called the Curtis Simpson Rule, and it's brought forward in magnitude of as you increase your fares, your ridership actually decreases, so it adds up. An inverse impact on what you're trying to do. That said, that doesn't stop us from doing our due diligence and looking really across the southeast and marketing our fares where they need to be. By and large, last fare study we looked at about 18 months ago, our fares are within market. I would agree with you that there's a lot of room for increased ridership to be able to continue to offset, to increase that percentage towards the budget. I... We can't, just because of some federal rules that get in the way, sit here and charge more for one route than for another. You start running into Title VI issues. We don't want to necessarily cause any access or discrimination issues for us to order for the city of Simpsonville. So it's something that we have paid attention to. Unfortunately, the... Sometimes the federal government gets in the ways of us doing things that might affect us business in our system.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Peddick.
Couple things. Circling back a little bit to what Mr. Reer brought up about the electric buses. On here, notice it says that cost, assuming cost of any bus is $1 million.
Yes, sir.
And the local mountain need would be $150,000. Is that another expense that we'll need to look at at some point?
No, sir. That's actually relative to the number that was $47,000. So we have assumed that it would take 12 years to be able to, basically accrue that amount in a savings account that we would set up between the city of Simpsonville and the city of Malden, and then a portion from the county as well. So if it's just the... So every year would be 1/12 of a very small percentage that is being added to that.
And then on the other thing you mentioned about the priorities being different possibly from Greenville, decisions were made, I guess, by the Transit Authority Board, is that correct?
It is. And it's from pressure as it relates to, well, need backup. Let's zoom out 30,000 feet, make sure we're... I've made a dangerous assumption here. So technically, the city of Greenville operates the transit system. So all of my employees actually work for the city of Greenville. I serve two masters. So technically, I work for the city of Greenville. I'm assigned just Greenville Transit Authority. If you go look at my ethics commission statement, it's on behalf of the Greenville Transit Authority. So whenever we talk about budgeting for the system, Greenville obviously has a heavy impact on that. So year over year, as we've talked about growth, there's been a number of conversations that have come out from the county and the city of why are we paying for this? We don't want to take this in. So while the decision ultimately has come from the Greenville Transit Authority, it's more of, they're delivering the message of what is going to happen regardless. I mean, we don't want to put the bad position. So we're here delivering the request to hopefully keep impacting people who actually need the bus.
Councilmember Brish.
One more question. I'm noticing that what we're seeing here is for Malden to kick in $54,000, and Simpsonville to kick in $47,000. Are any other branches going to other cities? Are any other cities asking VNS to do the same?
So, no. We skimmed through the city of Fountainhead on Harrison Bridge Road, and that's just because of their annexation over the past couple of years. We don't go into career, and we don't go into traveler's rest. Traveler's Rest is interested in transit. Career is sometimes interested in transit, depending on what year it is and who you talk to. Ultimately, the same funding mechanism for splitting state mass transit funding, it would apply to them as well. But if they came forward and said, career or traveler's rest, and hey, we want this, they would get a portion of that state mass transit funding that would subsidize their route, which would in turn mean that funding partners that exist, the city and the county, would be having to provide more in that. Again, the pie's not getting any bigger, it's just there's more kids to play on.
If the routes of coming to Simpsonville just drop off tomorrow, let's say, we didn't approve this, they ended tomorrow, how would that affect the overall budget that you have to operate?
Can you rephrase that question? How would it affect my budget?
Oh, how would it affect the bus system and the transportation system in general? I mean, how... I guess I need to know, how badly do you need this to keep the whole system running?
It isn't to keep the whole system running. It's to keep Route 601 running, right? It's to continue to allow people who live in Simpsonville to get to Malden and ultimately to Greenville. And by getting to Malden, getting to Greenville, moving around, it's getting to work, getting to Walmart, getting to their job, getting to Hillcrest Hospital, Bonneville's emergency room, like all the places that we see service. So the impact is to your constituents, right? And it's not to Greenville Transit Authority. Ultimately, you know, we're gonna hear it, but ultimately, it won't be because of the decision that we made, right? So there will certainly, there would certainly be blowback. You would certainly, you know, do... You would certainly, you know, deal with all of the news media in the area saying, hey, why did this happen? And, you know, lay out a plan for how to avoid it. Obviously, we don't, we don't want that to happen. But ultimately, at the end of the day, as it would relate to, you know, our budget, you know, at the end of the day, our budget would shrink. But it wouldn't be shrinking because of more than the impact of we're just providing less service to an area.
I did hear you correctly, and that Malden is basically waiting on Simpsonville, and if we don't approve, then they won't approve. So we're looking at a loss of a little over $100,000.
Yes, which would ultimately lead to the end of Route 601.
Councilman Brishin?
I'm very interested in seeing the data of how many citizens here are using it and to where they're going. And if, this is going to be something that comes back every year. If this gets approved, I'd really like to see in heart more data next year on. I'm interested to see what you have. I'm going to take a look at it. I'm wondering if there's, if we do pass this, if you can get more specific over next year when this comes back to council, so we can actually see harder data of who they actually use it and where they're going in a more specific area. I know that you can't answer that now, but that would be something that you're interested in, looking at this next year, this passes.
You can generate about as many reports as you want, just need to know what frequency.
Just, yeah. I, I think I can speak for Councilmember Roche that who, which one of our citizens in Simpson are using it and where they're going. That's, that's.
Well, we can give you where they get on and where they get off.
That's right.
That is, that is data that we have for every stop on every route, on every service that we provide. So that, that's easy. And I can't sit here and tell you that you ride the bus, and you ride the bus, and you ride the bus unless you have a touch pass account, and you've given me your home address, and then I can go run a report to find out if you're a user. It's ordering on, on an invasion of privacy. But at the end of the day, it's very anonymized data that we can sit here and tell you the number of people getting on and off in certain areas.
Thank you. Councilman Rier?
Councilmember Roche kind of stole a little of my thunder, but I want to kind of follow up on it. Could you pull up the route map real quick?
I can try, okay? I'm not making any promises.
I'm guessing, I'm trying to figure out why this is an all or nothing proposition between Malden and Simpsonville. If Simpsonville disagree, why couldn't Malden just have their bus route and pay whatever share they needed to pay to continue with theirs?
So they could, right? And that is an option. I think what you would see, though, is that you would like to not see any of that service coming into the city of Simpsonville. Nothing would prohibit Malden from coming to us and wanting to design some different route that served Malden in some different capacity. Or they could, if they chose to, fund service in Simpsonville.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about if Malden just wanted transit in Simpsonville, didn't, why is this an all or nothing proposition for both cities? If we both don't agree, no one gets anything.
Right, well, it's ultimately because the service runs into both areas, right? So it's about 50/50 with half of it in Malden and half of it in Simpsonville. And we can't just cut the route. I mean, we could, I guess, cut the route in half and it just, with the service in Malden. Operationally, though, that, just because it's not driving as far, doesn't mean that it costs any less, meaning it's operating the same hours, right? Just because the route is shorter, my hourly rate's the same.
I've, I've put together routes for, I don't know, 27 counties and things before. So I know reroutes can happen.
Sure.
I just did, I was just trying to figure out why we both had to agree in order for this route to stay in place in any way, shape, or form.
Councilmember Rier, I'm going to address that a little bit.
Okay.
To make it a little more clear. Because there's a cost share to keep Route 601 going, what the city administrator in Malden has said to me is that his council has already taken action on this, but it is contingent on whether or not Simpsonville is going to share in that cost.
Yes.
And so I guess it becomes a matter of they're willing to spend this much money, but they may not be willing to spend the difference.
Okay.
And we don't know the answer to that. I just know that they've, they've taken action based on Simpsonville's participation. Now, if this council decided to not participate, then I would imagine there's the administrator would go back to council and bring them that news, and Mr. Kiel and his staff would work with them to see what that looks like. But the request was made to both of us based on keeping Route 601.
Okay, thanks, that explains it, thank you.
Apologies for misunderstanding.
Oh, no, no, like I say, I'm new to this game right here, so I'm trying to get everything out of the question. Thank you.
Council?
Mr. Kiel, my understanding is, is that if we approved this, that we would be able to get a board seat on GTA, is that correct?
Well, that hasn't been completely vetted with legal, as the legislation currently requires funding partners are entitled to representation on the GTA, meaning that our board would expand from seven seats to nine seats. I wasn't going to mention that a few minutes ago, but ultimately, you would have monthly reports at any level that you would be interested in based on who you were interested in appointing as something.
Okay. I had the privilege of being invited to ride the 601 with the other mayors and some additional people. And what I found very interesting about it is, is the people who, first of all, I didn't meet any homeless people, not a one. Second of all, is it may be a function of just how many people Terry Merritt knows, but just the fact that people who are riding the bus, Terry Merritt knew a lot of people who were getting on and off of the bus. My point being that, again, it's not homeless people, this is, this is people we know. So I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. I buy gas at Murphy's down by the Walmart. I haven't seen anybody panhandling down there. I think it's important also to keep in mind that people that I did meet who are riding the bus are people who desperately need this transportation service. The folks I met were people who were going to work. They are using this transit to go to work. And if we push them out of public transit, they still need to get to work, what we're doing is pushing them into cars. And I know that council expresses this concern out loud a lot. We already have too much traffic. Mass transit is one thing that helps decrease the amount of traffic. What we need is more mass transit, not less. And in fact, what, what we really need is enough mass transit to make it where it's a viable alternative for all of us. Right now, the 601 route doesn't help me personally very much. I would ride it if it went places, I, you know, I might ride the bus from, from where I live to the north side of Simpsonville if it, you know, if it ran by closer to my house. So more, that's what you see in larger cities. You have a lot of mass transit, it's a very convenient thing, and people who live in the largest cities in the country don't own cars because they don't need cars. Where we have this concern about the amount of sprawl that is happening, in fact, your maps, I think, illustrate it extremely well, the amount of sprawl that we're seeing in Greenville County. Again, I go back to we need more mass transit, not less, because we're already experiencing the sprawl. We don't need things that increase traffic to be something that we should be considering. So that winds up my thought process. Anything else from council? Councilmember Roche?
Since a number of us want more data on the usage and the demand, I actually want to make a motion to table this. I don't think that we should vote on whether or not to spend this money until we have that data to back it. And I think admin, community relations, using our Zen format, could maybe poll the people. We can find out just how much our people actually need it before we spend it. So I'm going to motion that we table.
Councilmember Roche, point of order. The proper motion would be to postpone, and you should choose the date that you want to postpone to.
Mayor, if I may, just reminder that moving this to the business meeting on February 13th is not about affirming this decision, it's just moving it, which might provide enough time for you to receive the data and be better informed before you actually vote on it on February 13th.
It does require first and second reading, so.
It, it only requires one.
Or is it only one?
It, it would be, basically, it's just you all directing me to put it in the budget. GTA needed an answer before we pass the budget, obviously, because it affects their budget, which is going to be adopted at the same time. And that's why you're seeing it right now, but it's not going to be in the form of an ordinance. But I just need direction so that I can tell them it would be part of our FY25 budget. But there's not an official vote, you know, vote tonight is just to move it forward for council action on February 13th. This is for informational purposes, and you still have time to consider whether or not you want to, to direct me to put that funding in the FY25 budget. And so now you're looking at roughly three weeks before you're making a decision, and I think that would provide enough time. I hope we would have reports to you maybe by the end of this week, early next week, and then, you know, we could try some engagement platform in that period as well.
You have the floor, Councilmember Roche.
Yes, so then I would like to move that council postpones and move this decision to February the 13th.
Second? I don't think we need, we don't need to do it.
No, I don't think that action is necessary, because tonight's vote is not, is only to move it to the 13th for council consideration. So you already have that time without, without moving for a postponement.
That's correct. If you want to postpone this decision, then you would probably want to move it either to the next committee of the whole meeting, which would be February the 27th, or to, to go ahead and put it on the agenda for the March the 12th business meeting. Would you like to amend your motion? We currently have a motion with a second to.
Okay.
But I think I'm going to rule that motion out of work, and then you can make a new motion.
Do you want to do that, or?
Yeah, motion's out of work, so.
Okay, so now, Mayor, I move that we postpone the vote to the committee of the whole meeting on February 27th.
Your second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Roche with a second by Councilmember Pinkerton to postpone this vote until February the 27th.
If I may, I believe I owe you two things. Ridership data for Simpsonville and your interest in our customer demographic survey.
Yes, as much data that you can get without crossing any lines as far as how many people are we moving and how many people are we bringing back?
I can send you data, I can provide you the data. I'll give you some relevant data, though.
Yes, relevant for Simpsonville. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
So thank you. Wait, we have a subsidiary motion on the floor, discussion? Councilmember Hedges?
How hard is this deadline you gave us for February 28th?
The problem that you run into with transit is that there's federal money. And ultimately, if we end up in a position of having to remove service, the federal government requires that we provide proper notice to your residents that transit will not be available, which requires 30-day notice of changes, 30-day notice of, 30-day notice of a meeting, 30-day notice of the meeting, and then 30-day notice of the actual change. So we have a 90-day process to be able to remove service effective July 1. So there's a little bit of fluff in there, probably two weeks, but there's not a lot. We tried to give you all as much time to prepare your budgets that we can, can stand one, prepare hours, and two, to be able to meet our federal requirements in the House 6.
So if we move this to the committee of the whole meeting on the 27th, then we would actually be able to take a vote up and down until March 12th, 12th. Do we have a motion?
If you have an answer by March 12th, I'll be like.
For the discussion on the subsidiary motion? All right, so on the motion to postpone this agenda item to the February 27th Committee of the Whole Meeting, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All those opposing, by saying no. No. So by my count, we have six votes yes and one vote no, and this agenda item will be postponed to February the 27th. Thank you, Mr. Kiel.
Are you jumping on Friday?
Yes.
Excellent, we'll see you there. Thank you.
All right, next up on our agenda is item 8B, Greenville County Intergovernmental Agreement, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Co-Permittee. Administrator Graceley, would you summarize and introduce our speaker from Greenville County?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The city of Simpsonville, along with the cities of Malden, Traveler's Rest, and Fountainhead are part of Greenville County's NPVES permit, which is National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit. Essentially, Greenville County manages permits for land disturbance on behalf of the four municipalities that I mentioned. This intergovernmental agreement is necessary, it's required by DEHAC in order for us to spell out our responsibilities versus Greenville County's responsibilities toward the NPVES permit and, and our adherence to that permit. And so in order to avoid any confusion about what that means, I've asked a county engineer who is Judy Workcutter to come and provide a presentation to council on the permit and, and how Greenville County manages this for all of us. Well, as in, not all of us, the city of Greenville, the city of Greer are excluded, but the other municipalities are part of this. And then also, Heisha Gamble is with her. So I'll turn it over to you guys, and you can start your presentation.
Let me get you queued up here, folks. There's a remote control there on the dais, on the, on the podium, I'm sorry, that if you push the up button, will take you to the next slide.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I think, Ms. Graceley is already kind of giving you a brief summary of what I'm going to talk about, so I'll just go straight into the presentation. Well, maybe. Oh. There you go.
Maybe it's the down button, I think I told you backwards. There we go.
Okay.
Opposite way around from the page.
All right, so start with the Federal Clean Water Act is what really started this all. It started in the 70s. It primarily was looking at waste treatment plants and industries at, in the 70s. But what they found out in the 80s is that stormwater runoff from urban communities actually was 80% of the pollutants that were getting into our streams and our water. So they passed this NPVES intergovernmental permits at that point. And NS4 stands for Municipal Separate Stormwater Sewer Systems. That's what the four S's are. And the Phase 1 communities, we fell into Greenville County because of our population size. We are a medium Phase 1 community, and those were adopted in the 90s, but it really didn't start for us until the 2000s. So we already had a permit, and Greenville, Richland County, Columbia DOT were all people that had a Phase 1 permit. And those are supposed to be five-year cycle permits, and they're renewed, and then they're strengthened, and they're changed as laws are changed and things are added to our permit. Greenville County had its first permit in August of 2000. It was our second permit cycle that the co-permittees, you are, one of the co-permittees, with the four co-permittees, were added in 2007. It was only supposed to be a five-year permit, it went 14 years until DEHAC decided to renew it. At that point, our third cycle went to effect on 2021, and expires in 26. So as a part of that permit, like I said, the four co-permittees were already discussed, city of Greenville and Greer elected to do their own programs, and they are a Phase 2 community. 2 community. And so we took over in August of 2008, the construction activity that DEHEC was doing prior to that. DEHEC was doing all the permitting inside the city of Simpsonville prior to that. And then they initiated the Phase 2, which are the smaller cities, in 2007. So this permit is specific to improving water quality, and that's a difference in water quantity versus water quality. We have to have an annual work plan. We have to do a progress report. We do an annual report to them, telling them what we've accomplished over the last year. We have to tell them what we're going to accomplish in the upcoming year. We spend about $8 million a year to comply with this approved permit. And then EPA and DEHEC will do, does do periodic audits of our program. We've had pre-audits of our program in that timeframe. So we are subject to fines for non-compliance. Those are the numbers. We don't discuss that because I want to make sure that that doesn't happen. Richland County, though, did not comply with their permit, ended up with a $90,000 fine for not complying with their permit. So I take great pride in making sure that we are compliant. And the federal government, and on top of that, also nonadditional fines at a higher-dollar amount as well. So the goals of our permit particularly are to control pollutants that can get into your streams, pollutants such as sediment, fertilizer, pet and livestock waste, motor oil, antifreeze, brake pad that comes off of brake pads, asbestos, septic tanks, sanitary sewer leaks, trash, floatables, and other metals that come off of cars and industrial sites. It's kind of a summary of the program. We have these elements, and I'm going to go a little bit into detail, so I won't go through them specifically, but these are the different elements of our permit that we have to have compliance for each of these sections. So the first thing that we have to do is we have to inventory all the outfalls of a certain size, and we do that. We did that in our first permit cycle. So when the co-permittees came onboard, we spent the first couple of years inventorying all the municipal boundary outfalls at that point. And then every year, we add new pipes. As a new subdivision comes onboard, and there's a pipe over 24 inches or a swell or ditch of a certain size, we add that into our inventory. And this is a picture of the early days of us doing some of the inventory work that we were doing. We have a consultative board that does a lot of our inventory work. They also, as a part of it, and that's because they also have to do dry screening. So they have to test any place where there is live water. They have to go in and test that to determine if there are any types of pollutants in that outfall. And these are just a series of the types of things that the consultants are testing for as a part of that outfall inventory and screening. So we've inventoried over 8,000. Now I'm going to go on to the detention pond inspection program that we have as a part of that. So detention ponds started off as just controlling quantity, volume of water. With time, they also started treating for water quality. And so as a part of the permit, we are required to inventory. So we have over 8,000 stormwater management facilities, and we use GPS to document those. We've also found a lot of undocumented ponds. One thing we found is that DEHEC, when they were permitting for UOL, didn't do a very good job of making sure that the ponds actually got completed. So we have found a lot of ponds that still have open NOI coverage, was never closed, and therefore they weren't really completed, they weren't cleaned out, they weren't shaped up. We had a meeting with DEHEC, and we tried to get them, we gave them the list to try and get those, you know, wrapped up and cleaned up. But we did tell them that those ponds, that we would not take them into the inventory until they were really functioning. So sometimes we do get a complaint in the city of Simpsonville. Mostly, we've had the bigger problems have been in Malden, that we will pass those on to DEHEC and let them deal with any compliance or complaints that may come from those ponds. But all the other ponds that we were able to take over, we do have inspectors that go out. We have three field inspectors that divide the county into watersheds. We try to get to every one of those 8,000 ponds once in our five-year permit cycle. We also respond to complaints. The big storm that we had here in Simpsonville this past summer, I was down at the sports club working out when that big storm came through. We did respond to a lot of those complaints. We did find some ponds and outfalls that had broken and busted during that storm that we did rip them up and had gotten them back into compliance. And so again, I was telling you about the ones that haven't really been properly closed up by DEHEC. We refer those to DEHEC if we get a complaint from those that were documented. So just example, here's one that's probably not well-maintained, and this is kind of what we want, the pond still advised, just an example. So the other thing we're supposed to have is a comprehensive master plan of where we're working to achieve what's called the maximum spec practical standards of the clean water act, is having of trying to reduce those pollutants after construction is completed. We call that post-construction water quality features. And we need to not only document where the new ones are, but then go back and figure out where are our worst areas of pollutant. We also have something called TMBLs, and they are total maximum daily loads, and they are imposed upon us by EPA and DEHEC. If there has been impaired waters that have been on their 303D list for a series of years, they could very well incorporate a TMBL. The biggest one that came in for us was in the Reedy River for nutrients. We were the only second one in the state having to have a nutrient TMBL. We negotiated with EPA and DEHEC for only second time, also in the country, something called a 5R, which it allows us to make the rules and regs of how we think we need to comply, instead of being top-down, it's bottom-up. And we have a series of stakeholders, and members of the cities are invited to our meetings that we have on annual basis as we try to work out these details with the TMBL. For the specific one that drains to the Reedy River, which a portion of Simpsonville drains to, Boyd Mill Pond in Lawrence County and the Reedy River branch at the Lake Greenwood are the impaired water bodies. They're saying all of the runoff from Greenville County, including Lake Greenwood. We're trying to prove that that's not the case with our monitoring program. So like I said, we were the first in the state to have a specific reduction specifically for nutrients, similar to what's being done in the Chesapeake Bay area, as you've heard about what's been doing in that area. And so all the co-permittees in the city of Greenville is a portion of that, has a portion of their boundaries within that watershed, and Reedy was also considered a contributor for those problems. So we're trying to work together as a team to solve those problems, which has been in the past where it was, you know, we were blaming each other, and now we're trying to work together as a team to solve these problems. We also have a new requirement that came in board as a part of our 2021 permit, and we had done some wording into our last permit that said, any old TMBLs that have been hanging around for a while, unless DEHEC told us it's a problem now, we're not going to do anything about it. Well, they caught that wording this time, so they changed that wording, they took it out, and now they're saying any existing TMBLs, any water bodies in which the NS4 is draining to, we now need to develop a monitoring plan within 12 months, which we have, and then an implementation plan, which we're working on. And basically, there are 18 TMBLs in Greenville County for either Ecoli or Fecal. 15 are Fecal, three are Ecoli. The areas shaded in pink are all the areas that are Ecoli. And most of the area that you see that's white is Reedy River, which has the nutrient TMBL. So essentially, you know, we're dealing with the same problem as with Greenville County. And so we're, you know, we're working on now trying to come up with what is the pollutant concern. We're actually doing some DNA sampling to determine if it's coming from wild animals or is it coming from humans, is it coming from dogs? So that is more in the process of working on that monitoring and implementation plan. So more information will come on that later. So what are some of the sources? Solar erosion, water runoff from croplands, lawns, gardens, stream bank erosion, livestock, asters, range, rangeland forests. So applications from golf courses and farmlands, the fertilizer that comes off of that, failed septic tanks, leaky sanitary sewer lines, INI issues, SSOs, things I'm sure that you've heard about from your public works director. Animal manure, farms, domestic dogs, wild geese, ducks, deer, they are all contributors to this problem. Yard clippings and detergents and automotive products are all also pollutants that are non-point source. So what we have found in our research from the Chesapeake Bay area and parts of the country is that the cheapest and most cost-effective way to address some of these pollutants of concerns are stream buffers. We recently passed a stream buffer in the county through our land development regulations. Doesn't affect the cities right now. We may be adding that to our stormwater ordinance than it would, but we're going to do that as part of that implementation plan we're talking about putting together. Also, what we have found is stream stabilization. A lot of urbanization as it goes on, these developed, you know, this road into creek beds, a lot of the sediment has pollutants attached to the sediment. So making sure that we go back and stabilize some of these stream banks and keep them from eroding again is another way of reducing that pollutant load. So we found the buffers and stream stabilization are the two most cost-effective, and we think it's one of the best things for our community anyway in general. So we do have a monitoring program in the early 2000s when we started, it was rad samples. We now have incorporated latest technology, and I'll show you a little bit about that here. It's something with data songs, and we have it set up with a series of cell towers at those different locations, sending information every 15 minutes back to our consultants who then use that information and summarize it on a daily, weekly, monthly, annual basis. But here was what the sampling stations looked like in the 2000s. Of course, these had to be handled manually, and always rained on holidays and the evenings and on the weekends, and we'd have to run the sample people out to get them, have to run them to a lab. Some of the testing had to be done immediately, some did not. So that was very labor-intensive. We have now gone to these monitoring stations that we have set up. The red are the monitoring stations, and on the yellow net is our series of rain gauges, which has been very helpful when we've had these storms. We can go to where the storms are and look at our rain gauges. That storm we had last week was five to six inches of rain pretty much across the county. And so we're going to use this information to determine even intensities within 15-minute blocks that may have indicated a higher storm intensity than they were seen county-wide. All this information helps us in our program. This is what our monitoring stations look like now. I'll give you that little picture here. They have a tube that runs down into the creek, and what you see on the right-hand side is one of our data songs, and each of those little data songs are testing for particular pollutant or what we call a surrogate that matches a pollutant. And so like I said, that's taking readings every 15 minutes and sending it by cell tower. So we also, because of the nitrogen in the nutrient TMBL in the Reedy River, we were trying to get a good idea at the time. We used nitrate analyzers, there was not a good data song for nitrates. So we had this system, but this system with the, it almost looks like an ID tube, but it would freeze, so we couldn't use it year-round. So we recently found that there's new data songs, and we're kind of deconditioning these particular things, but we have these on several of the monitoring stations along the Reedy River. So one of the things we're required to do then is to prioritize our watersheds. We did that by doing that mean concentrations for that sampling for different places in the county. And as you can probably see, well, we go here. So we used all these criteria to determine where was our worst problems, and we looked at the entire county. And what we found is we have it shaded by rents, and so our worst problems, I think you can imagine, are above the city of Greenville, in the older areas of town, above Unity Park is where our biggest problem is. But our second problems are in the orange area, of which this, basically, some of that lower orange area is the city of Simpsonville. So there are a couple of tributaries that do have some indication of some problems. So we're just working our way through those problem watersheds. Greenville County has a buyout program that we were doing, a lot of subdivisions that were built prior to floodplain FEMA maps. But also, the buyout program not only solved people's homes being flooded, it is also there's water quality benefits by removing those buildings and those homes out of the floodplain, less fertilizer being from yards, dogs are gone now. So there is a water quality benefit of removing homes from our floodplain buyout. And we're able to analyze that information and present that in our annual reports to DEHEC. We also have illicit discharge program. All these things that we're doing are being done within the city, so it isn't just the construction program, which is our biggest element, but illicit discharges, we get phone calls from somebody that they see something, we'll go out and investigate it. That monitoring station system, sometimes they have, they will see a glitch, and they have alarm set if some parameters go out of a certain number, and they'll go out, and we'll do some investigations. But some of the typical legal discovery calls and complaints that we get is construction debris or household waste that is being abandoned at sites. We've got a sheriff's department that handles that in the county. Dumping wastewater from washing machines and sewer lines into streams or into the catch basins, dumping chemicals or motor oils, cleaning solutions, carpet cleaning waste, we find all those kind of complaints, people calls about that. Dumping food waste and grease, somebody caters a big barbecue pork and they don't want to take the grease back with them to wherever their faces. We found that dumped in catch basins and have calls and complaints about that. Dumping pet waste is probably the biggest thing we hear, is people complaining about their neighbors. If they happen to pick it up, but they don't want to take it home, then they dump it into the catch basins. So that's a complaint we get. But as I was saying, with our monitoring stations, we do have some alarm setup, so if we do see a spike and we hit that alarm set off, they will take a handheld data song out and try and track that pollutant up to an actual source. And we also are doing sub watershed illicit discharge investigations. We're picking the oldest areas of town, and there's about two to four mile, a square mile area, and we're just trying to take the most developed parks in the county and go through them. And we're trying to find locations where there is leaky sanitary sewer lines, we can see evidence of that, and we report those to whoever's responsible for the sewer lines. You know, we find evidence of people dumping things in the creek, and we'll take that up with our illicit discharge. So we're doing that, we're methodically going to the county watershed by watershed to investigate illicit discharges. We also did some float mapping. We got one of the consultants on a kayak with a data song, and they went up and down over a five-day period, the entire Reedy River, and we did find some illicit discharge that was inside the city of Greenville, so we reported it to them for them to work towards eliminating that. We have an industrial runoff program. We're required to go and look at industries and make sure that they aren't dumping anything directly into the creeks and streams as well. We do about 30 inspections a year. There's 155 industrial NLIs, and we have 66. They're supposed to be non-exposure. However, during our investigations, we found a lot of no exposures, actually had stuff out in the parking lot that were exposed and could have had a runoff problem as well. So we write those up. DEHEC is officially the enforcer of the industrial program. We consider ourselves the eyes and ears of DEHEC because they are rather understaffed, and it's a part of our permit to do that. So what we set up, we send out questionnaires. We don't get a good response back, and we don't get one back. That would be on our list to go inspect that year. New facilities, we go inspect. We haven't done a previous inspection. Those are the... We haven't done a previous inspection, those are the, how we pick our 30. Also, there's a roadway management section where we're all required, as we do work in the road right-of-way, that we're making sure that we're minimizing any impacts that we might be contributing to our work crews. And so there's a whole lot of wording in our permit on that as well. So, you know, the typical things when we're doing roadside ditching, making sure that we get a reestablished seat and that we're our own staff and putting up silos and doing things that we ask private contractors to do, that we're doing that as well. We're also working now towards more doing what we call low-impact development or green infrastructure, where these devices that you see that can be pretty and can look like landscaping is also treating for water quality before it gets into the catch basin system. And so one thing that Wolpert also does, and they have just completed this series of going and inspecting the co-committees' public works buildings and for any potential violations. So as a part of that, we develop what's called a SWIP, and each of the public works facilities is supposed to have that SWIP available, that if DHEC was to walk in the door, that they would want to see that SWIP. They have logs in there that we're supposed to be logging our inspections, that if you have a spill, like you're supposed to show the proper spill response, that making sure that material is covered or inside a building, again, same thing like an industry, that you don't have that out in the open, that rain could be exposed to it and washed away. So we put those SWIPs together, we've done training with staff, and I think I've only did that a little bit here. So yes, we've had live training, we've had that available to all the co-committees along with our own staff. We've also put together a training video that we are hoping the co-committees and our own staff is showing with new staff members as they come on board as a part of the orientation. But it's basically how do you maintain the roads, spill response, making sure you have the proper erosion control measures up, how do you operate around convenience centers or fueling stations if you have a spill, what you're supposed to do. Auto-heel and vehicle maintenance areas, making sure that the proper disposal of oils and grease and things can be used as a part of that. So parks and landscaping, how are you using herbicides and pesticides if you're using those? And sanitary sewer system, you know, are you maintaining your sewer lines and dealing with appropriate SSOs and working towards eliminating those. So the construction and post-construction site runoff is probably the thing you're most familiar with that we do for you, and that is the oversight of permitting the sites and then inspecting the construction activities. We've been delegated by DHEC for the 72300, which is the quantity control, heat rate attenuation, that's what DHEC was doing for you before. So we're also responsible and required to enforce the X 2021 general construction permit requirements for construction activities. We've incorporated their requirements into our requirements. And then under cycle two MOU, we also enforce any stormwater requirements that you only have that are higher standard than what DHEC has. Molden has 100-year stormwater requirement inside the city of Molden, so we enforce that for them. We have a co-committee compliance manual that we've had training with on the people in the building codes department, on how we work together, and we, we have, we bought Bluebeam, which is a computer software program that allows us to do plan review comments for all the co-committees, and we send plans electronically, they provide the comments as well, you know, back to us, we include them. We include your building codes and planning staff in our PSMs when there's one in the city, so that your staff also has input into the plans that are going to be presented to us. And we do not approve a plan until we've had the city staff sign off on those plans as well for the zoning and floodplain and any of your planning requirements that you have as well. But we have seven inspectors, we have four plan reviewers, we have one permit coordinator, and we have one complaint inspector who handles, this is the biggest part of our program, that handles construction in the areas that we talked about. So, you know, with the erosion, sediment prevention, sort of kind of stuff. So again, the Clean Water Act has various stiff penalties for people who are disturbing areas without proper permitting. And if we don't do a good job of ensuring compliance, then there's stiff penalties against us if we're not ensuring compliance with those federal and state laws. So again, that's part of that auditing that they do. So we do try to work very closely together with municipal building code inspector to make sure that we're in compliance with all those requirements. So, I mean, this is an example, in the old days, EPA came in, EPA came in in the site above Weedy River and put a major violation on the sites. So they can over, if they don't feel I'm doing a good job, and they get a complaint, DHEC, EPA can get a complaint. They come in and find violations, they themselves will go and put the violation on the site and then bring them into consent order. And that's just some of the things that they found through the national builders that they put some major runoff violations on. So we also provide public education and involvement, mainly it's done by Soil and Water. Greenville County's Land Development Division, we train the specific users, the engineers, the surveyors, but Soil and Water provides the training element that goes out to the general public, and have staff members that are assigned just to this activity alone. And that's just a series of things that they handle. They do teacher stormwater education, they go into the schools and do student education pollutants, they work closely with the Rockaway Mountain Science Center. They do, again, we do county and municipal employee training, we do design their training courses, we try to get contractors to come to training, they don't come, but we offer it. We've offered industrial operator training in the past and the development community, we've offered training. So again, they say we're supposed to, we're supposed to provide this in types of outreach, that's the wording specifically on the permit. But again, usually it's on things that use motor oil and household hazardous waste, how we handle that, encouraging the public to reduce their use of pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers, working with pet owners and HOAs and others to minimize places where animal waste can get into the stormwater system. And the latest one that's been added to our permit is trash and debris, and it's education on how it does affect water quality. So this is what we consider effective education. In fact, we started this, and other parts of the country have called us and asked if they can use this program as well, so you'll see this, other parts of the country, but started here in Greenville County. This is not so effective, but this is the kind of calls that we get from citizens complaining about their neighbors dumping it down, and some citizen in this neighborhood took it upon themselves to put up their own educational sign. So, so why am I here tonight? As a part of our permit, it is required that we do have an intergovernmental agreement in place. We were supposed to have that done in year one, but it was, our staff was a little bit behind. The county attorney took some time to really dig into our permit requirements, trying to figure everything out and looking at what we're supposed to be doing, what they're supposed to be doing. They even brought an outside environmental attorney in a little bit to look at it. One of the things that they decided and found is that the past MOUs that were handled was not really the appropriate vehicle for this level of a program, and that it really required an intergovernmental agreement, and that's why we're here in front of you today. So what that intergovernmental agreement is, it outlines what everybody's responsibilities are. Our last audit, DHEC was a little critical that they felt like the co-committees weren't involved enough, leaving it too much to us and not being an active participant in the permit. And so the intergovernmental agreement outlines some close responsibilities to assist more in the public outreach, making publications available in your offices that we put together, again, the building permit coordination, which we were already doing, making sure that your public works folks are providing good housekeeping, records-keeping and training, that if you're having INI, SSO issues, that you are working towards removing those problems. Also, if you're doing a capital improvement project, a road program, that you consider putting in some of those green infrastructure to solve some of the runoff that's coming off the road and treat some of that prior to going to the catch basins. And then, of course, to maintain your own stormwater management facilities that you may have had to have as a part of a new building or expansion. If there's a retention pond that's providing service for a building, you've got to be maintaining that. So that's some of the roles and responsibilities that you all have. Also, any litter control on municipal streets, if you, I don't know if you're doing street sweeping, I don't think many are. Only if, at this point, if a string buffer uses a water quality feature, you need to help us enforce that. Employee training, spill prevention, emergency response if a major spill was on one of your streets, proper motor fluid disposal wherever you have your vehicles being maintained, and that if you have staff that is handling herbicides and pesticides, if they are properly licensed. And that is it. So the program is a lot more than just the construction program that we are handling for you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilt. Motion is in order. Councilmember Roche.
There, I move that council approved the Greenville County intergovernment agreement as presented.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Roche with a second from Councilmember Root.
I just have a question from Pinkerton. I know you talked a lot about quality, quantity, maybe this kind of ties together, but where do you stand on existing storm drain facility systems that are currently undersized to handle stormwater runoff that actually impacts the neighborhoods and creates retention ponds on their own? And that they also run over top, the additional water systems run over top of sewer systems, which you probably know sewer generally follows the creeks because they all go downhill.
Right.
So if we have an undersized system that can create problems, what is your, what is your position on that?
Well, our position is, is that, that those were a lot of our existing problems that were there prior to the Greenville County taking over the program and maintain the, looking at for, as far as new development of those. If the problem's already existing there, Greenville County does not step in and do any quantity size upgrades. I think that has been discussed in the past with both Esha and Paula in the past. You have the opportunity, if you would like to go into that type of program, to add on to the stormwater utility fee and to be able to do some of those upgrades. Now, so, you know, that is one option that we have is to go in that direction, but we will make sure that any sites that are being constructed are being constructed to the current standards. But we would not go in and look at upgrading anything in the city of Sensiville just for a quantity issue.
Even if this causes a quality problem?
Now, I was about, that is the only thing, is if, if we do have it where there is a great deal of erosion and it's in our priority areas that we're working towards, we will start doing stream, those stream stabilization projects that we were talking about, but we would not like upgrade a culvert as a part of that, we would just do the stream stabilization. And we're, like I said, our priority right now has been in the areas on the west side of town that drain towards Unity Park. We are also looking at an area that is near Molden that has some severe erosion that we're looking at to do as a part of our stream stabilization. But generally, at this point in time, if that was an existing problem that was there, also at one point, the attorney that represented the cities did not want to get into the business of off-ride-away drainage assistance. But since we've had some of these larger storms, I don't know if you all have been maybe stopping to think, we have that, we have an off-ride-away drainage program that we do take some of the stormwater utility funds and use that to do other types of upgrades. But that is something that, you know, you all can consider, but it would be an addition added on top of the fees. Now, also, no, the fees are very low. It's only $22 and $24 for a resident on an annual basis. There's some places in the country that are paying that monthly. So you all have the ability, if you want to, to come up with your own capital improvement program and add that on to the existing stormwater utility fee and be able to address some of those problems.
And real quickly, how often are the floodplain maps updated and who does that?
Well, we, it's done for the city and it's done, you know, inside the city. I don't, I can't pull up a floodplain map on my county GIS inside the city. I can get, I can do that from the county.
Yes, I've seen it on the county.
Yeah. So I'm not sure how often do you know how often? Yeah, that's handled by Brian Bishop, who's the floodplain manager, he's in the building codes department. I do know what we do is that if a site ends up impacting it, it's not to prove that you're not impacting the floodplain. If you are impacting the floodplain, then you have to go through a revision process to the floodplain maps. So we're having to do that on one of the stream stabilization, that we're running the numbers and it's showing that there's a change, it's going to be a good change, but because we're changing it, we're going to have to potentially go through that floodplain map revision process.
But that's on new construction?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure how often the floodplain, how much, yeah, with the federal government, how often they update the maps.
And that's a federal?
It is, and now, we have, Greenville County has elected to use some of the stormwater utility fee to do a detailed study in what's considered those Z zones, those unzoned areas that are maybe rapidly developing, you want to get an elevation established, but that's something that the county has put some money into. Now, there are grants available that can go towards doing some special studies that then could be used to apply for a map revision.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so Councilmember O'Rear.
Yes, I guess just to kind of boil it down to simplicity for me, you make new construction comply, but we don't repair known problems.
Right. That's, that's not a part of the county's water quality program or the program that we've got together, yeah.
Okay, because I, and you know, the reason I think of it is because the people living in some of the areas that Councilmember Pinkerton prior referring to are probably the people that have lived here the longest and have paid into this system the longest. And, you know, most people's homes are their biggest asset. So you, if you live in an area with a known issue, it could damage your investment in your home while new construction folks get to just come in and have it, make sure it doesn't harm them.
Well, we're making sure that new construction isn't harming the existing people. That, that's what our role is, is to, when we put in the site and put the detention, we make them do a downstream analysis to make sure that what's being put in new isn't going to worsen the problem downstream or make a problem downstream. So usually, because it also happens too, that it seems like, you know, just how history built Greenville is that all the main roads were up on the ridge and all the commercial was along that ridge, and then all the residential was down below it, and so it always seemed to drain commercial down into residential areas. But that's what we make sure, that that new site isn't going to impact those older neighborhoods.
Thanks.
Councilmember Hacks.
You mentioned year one a moment ago, what year is that?
That was in 2000.
So we've been operating as a co-committee, but?
No, since 2007. Our first permit year, we did it on our own, we worked by ourselves, and the co-committees joined in 2007.
But not under any kind of intergovernmental?
It was under an MOU, which at the time, that's what the county attorney thought was appropriate. Then he got one of his spitty staff members and very sharp-minded, she said, I don't think, I think it needs to be an intergovernmental agreement.
So are we looking at a lot of areas maybe where we're not in compliance at the moment?
No, no. We're, we're in compliance with our permit. They, when they do the audit, you know, they basically said that the co-committees probably need to have a little more skin in the game, is what they told us at the last audit. We haven't had a passing grade on our plan review, hasn't come, but we've got the best plan review in the state, but they're very, very picky when they come in and they, you know, they Monday morning quarterback all our plans, so. But everything else in our permit, including the co-committees, we're in compliance. But everything else in our permit, including the co-committees, we're in compliance. I think they spot checked a couple of public works facilities, and you were lucky, it wasn't Sensibyl, it was Mulden, it was that old facility that now is gone, thank goodness it didn't get a very good grade. One of our own sites didn't get a very good grade out there because of what we call the variety pile. But overall, we had a passing audit the last time.
So if we decided not to enter into this intergovernmental agreement, that would mean we would be taking on obtaining an MPDES permit of our own and doing all the engineering and monitoring and?
Yes, you would have to do everything that I outlined that we've been doing for you.
All 64 slides. So how many staff do you have in the county doing this work?
We have a staff of 22.
22.
In the land development division.
Okay. My final comment is, back in real life, I used to do health, environmental, safety, and done the whole MPDES permitting, and that's for industry, not for a county, obviously, but I will tell you that doing the environmentalist stuff and then doing permitting was my least favorite thing to do. So I know what you do, and I appreciate what you do, and thank you very much for doing it. Any further discussion or comment from counsel? All right, on the motion to approve Greenville County intergovernmental agreement, MPDES co-permittee as outlined by Ms. Perketter, and move this item to our next business meeting agenda, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries by seven votes yes, zero votes no. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 8C, and that item is coming from me, it's a change to the Code of Ordinances, section 2-65, paragraphs B and C, to allow the city council meeting times to be set by resolution. So I will briefly summarize what this is about. The objective, the overall objective of this change is to allow council to set meeting times and meeting days as designated by council through resolution rather than having that formalized, codified in our code ordinances. The ultimate objective would be to change our meeting time from 6:30 to 6:00 p.m., because an earlier meeting time is more accommodating to our city staff, and frankly, instead of being a quarter to nine, it would be, you know, just a little bit past eight if we had started a half hour earlier. So I do think that it's, that would be something we would consider down the road. I encourage counsel not to debate what is the appropriate meeting start time tonight because we do have it codified in the ordinances, and in order to change our meeting time, we have to go through committee of the whole, first reading, second reading, the process that takes two and a half months. So the first time we would be able to consider changing the meeting time under this proposal would be in March. So if we, if it appears we're going to pass this, at the time that that second reading comes up, I will put an item on the agenda to pass a resolution to change the meeting time, and then we can discuss that meeting time then. The other piece that's really problematic, what happened is, is I suggested that we should meet at 6 o'clock for our last meeting, and Councilmember Pinkerton rightly pointed out, wait a minute, this is set by code. And being a new council member, being a good new council member, he read the code and went, that's not going to work, so I'm glad he caught that. That was because of the 6 versus 6:30 thing, but we had also, the administrator and I had discussed moving the place of our meeting for the December meeting to the senior and activity center at the congregate dining hall, the new congregate dining hall, and decided not to because we had a full council chambers for an item that, we needed the room here so we couldn't move it. But if we had moved it informally, we would have actually been in violation of the ordinance. So, you know, it's problematic from that standpoint. The way the code currently reads, it says council can amend, council may alter the schedule of meetings particularly when a regular meeting falls on a legal holiday or weather or other conditions may get hazardous for council members and the public to attend a meeting. Well, for council to do something, council must have a public meeting with 24 hours of public notice, and, you know, it's not something that is a nimble way of dealing with a weather event or some other, you know, we had a water line break here in City Hall, we need to meet someplace else. So when I researched this and saw that Mulden, they don't specify where they meet or the times or the days they meet, Fountain End's the same way, I suggested proposed wording that would be wording that says that we meet at least once in every month, which is the minimum that we are allowed to meet under state law. I'm not suggesting that we stop meeting twice a month except for November, December, I think we keep the same schedule we have. And doesn't specify the place and doesn't specify the time and allows us to set that by resolution. And then would also give me the authority as the mayor to prudently alter the place or the time of a meeting if we have an emergency, weather, conflict with a holiday, or some other very compelling reason why we would need to do that. Of course, that does not change the requirement under state law that we have 24 hours of notice to the members of council and members of the public. So with that, I am going to move that we change the Code of Ordinances, section 2-65, paragraphs B and C, to allow city council meeting times to be set by resolution.
My second.
I have a motion from Mayor Schumaker and a second from Councilmember Hutchings. You've heard my discussion, any other discussion from counsel?
Real quick.
Councilmember Rier.
The reason to, because of the previous verbiage, it didn't mention or any other compelling reason, just wanted to figure, why did you want to add that to that?
So the way it's spelled out now is, it says for weather or conflict with a legal holiday, if we, for example, if we knew, when we get into the new city hall, the art center auditorium will be very close, if we had very large attendance, we could, you know, we could go, oh, we need to, we need to meet in a larger venue, or the thing where we would have liked to, we were anticipating that our December meeting was going to be a very light agenda, and we were going to have a reception for our outgoing council members, we were just going to move the meeting to, and of course, with public notice, that would be a compelling reason. Not that the mayor wants to, this time we're going to meet over here, next time that's down at Heritage Park, and, you know, we're not going to do that. All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Roche?
I like the, I personally like the current wording of the ordinance because it serves the people. The way that we're changing it feels more like it serves us. I like the wording that establishes the day, the time, the number of times, and the fact that councils may alter the schedule of meetings particularly when a regular meeting falls on a legal holiday, or if weather or other conditions may get hazardous for council members and the public to attend a meeting. That definitely came into play during COVID when we decided to have our meetings online for safety. My issue with the wording that's proposed is that it says the mayor may alter the schedule of meetings, and this is not personal at all, but you won't always be the mayor. And so, you know, somebody else might come along behind you and not have the goodwill that you have in interpreting this. I can see how this could be skewed for personal reasons. What we need to be very, very careful of is never moving a meeting and the public not know, well, where are we meeting this time, or what time are we meeting this time? The current wording definitely serves the public, it spells it out completely, and the current wording gives the council the authority to alter the schedule of the meeting. Now, how that's accomplished, I don't know, since we have, as you pointed out, we have to have a full meeting to discuss that. So we'd have to have a special meeting in order to alter the schedule of the meetings, and then get that out there 24 hours in advance as to where and what time and what date. So that's a little precarious, but I do like the fact that the council may alter the meetings. We do have a strong council, weak mayor form of government, and I think that the ordinance should reflect that. So I'd be more in favor of it if the proposed wording included, the council may alter the schedule of the meetings in whatever changes that we make. That's all.
Any further discussion? On the motion to approve the change to the Code of Ordinances, section 2-65, paragraphs B and C, to allow city council meeting times to be set by resolution, and move this to the next business meeting, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries by a vote of seven yes and zero no's. And with that, that concludes all of our business items for this evening, and we will stand adjourned if there are no objections.